The fact that it's not a funded plan and we can talk more about that later. With respect to salary increases, the pension plan addresses it with a 5.25% salary increase. And with respect to OPEB, it was not applicable because the way we calculated our benefits and spread our liability out over time was not related to salaries. With respect to mortality, each one of the pension valuations used, there was three different methodologies used with three of the pension plans and another in the municipal, and we used a different rate. It's really just preference, but essentially what we're trying to say with respect to mortality is how long do we expect folks to live? And because we have more of a, we've taken all of the groups into consideration in the OPEB plan, whereas with pension, they've broken it down. So, the assumptions with respect to pension are probably more tailored to each individual group, and assumptions with respect to OPEB are with respect to a larger group of folks. The disability assumption that was used in the report, the pension has various different assumptions for disabilities, and with respect to the OPEB, our disability assumption is factored in to our retirement probability assumption. With respect to withdrawals, the pension also uses various rates. We used 0 to 15%, and it was based on the position that someone was in. With respect to years of service, the pension plans require 20 to 30 years of service for some groups, 25 to 30 years for other groups. With respect to the OPEB benefits, it's police and fire are eligible for the benefits after serving for 20 years. Other employees are eligible after they serve from 55 to 10 years. And the reason why there's different is there are two different benefits. So, it's not necessarily typical to see those years of services aligned. Then we also dealt with marriage and dependents. We assume that 75% of the folks in our population would be married, and female spouses would be three years younger than male employees and retirees. The pension uses a slightly higher probability. Our assumption was based on prior year reports, and again, the fact that we are dealing with an aggregated population versus an individualized population. And then finally, we're getting down to the bottom of our list here. We've got trend assumptions, which are not applicable to pension because that's really related to salary increases, and we're dealing with what we expect to happen to the cost of these benefits as we go through time. And we used a low trend rate of 3% to a high trend rate of 7.1%. And we also had talked earlier about our ultimate trend rate of 5.7%. That's question five. Question number six asks us what the expected rate of increase in healthcare costs used in the OPEB valuation reports is, and what is the basis for those numbers? And we kind of talked a little bit about that earlier in question four. And next year, we're using a 3% rate. If we go out to 2015, just to grab a number off of the chart, we're using 7.1%. And when we get out to 2070, we're using 5.7%. The methodology behind that is what we call a long-run medical cost trend model. And basically, it takes into consideration a lot of different factors. It takes into consideration our expected rate of inflation, what we expect to happen to real income, what we expect to happen to healthcare spending, what we expect to happen with respect to technology as it impacts healthcare. And then, we have another element, which we call healthcare share of GDP resistance point, which is a factor that we say, basically, when will the economy say, you know, healthcare's taken enough out of the GDP? And that's 25%. And so, the combination of those elements go into projecting our inflation rate. Question number seven asks us to compare and contrast factors that have resulted in the city's unfunded healthcare liability growing four times as large as the school system's unfunded healthcare liability. Now, before I address that question, I think, I think the, using the word "growing" in there is probably not necessarily reflective of what's actually happened. The liability for the city is four times higher than the liability for the school. It's not necessarily growing at a quicker rate. And the factors that we highlight in our answers to the council's question are basically, the most significant things are the benefit payment period, whether or not the plan covers spouses and dependents, how many retirees we expect to elect the benefits, and what the participants contribute. And so, going back to the top of that list, with respect to benefit payment period, if you work for the city, you're going to get the OPEB benefits for the remainder of your life once you retire. If you work for the school, you're only going to get those benefits to 65. So, there's a significant difference in the duration of the payment stream. With respect to covered spouses and dependents, if you work for the city, we'll cover your spouse and dependent. If you work for the school, it's limited coverage or no coverage at all. And then, we talked earlier about who's going to elect the benefits. With respect to the school district, there's a significant portion of their population that's going to defer electing these benefits. There's a 15% election for the non-professional employees, and that 15% impacts over 1,000 people in the school. With respect to the city, we're saying everybody who's eligible for the benefit will actually take it. And then, with respect to contributions, if you work for the city, there is no contribution presently. If you work for the school, you're going to contribute 20 to 60%, depending on when you were hired. And then, on the next page, we continue. With respect to years of service, the school district requires 20 to 30 years of service. The city's only requiring 10 to 20. And then, retirement ages are a little different in the city. If you're a uniformed employee, you can retire at 20 years. If you're another type of municipal employee, you can retire at 55. And then, if you had worked for the school district, by contrast, you'd need to work 20 to 30 years, and in most cases, you need to be 62. So, the benefit payment period is significantly shorter, resulting in a liability that's going to be on a magnitude of four times less. Question number eight is with regard to other post-employment benefits, OPEB. Please provide a forecast of the annual cost to fund these benefits for the next 20 years. Now, the response that we prepared shows the benefits for 10 years. And the reason why we didn't carry it out for 20 years was because the fact is that the population that we're working with is a closed group. So, in 20 years, a lot of the folks may have expired, may have left. So, there's a lot of reasons why carrying it out 20 years isn't going to give you probably the information that you're looking to get. But I think the significant thing to get from looking at this chart is that in year 2011, we're saying that the benefit payment cost is going to be $7.6 million, and that in year 2019, it goes to 7, or excuse me, $10.7 million. One of the things that may not be evident in this chart is that all we've done with respect to making these benefit payments is just pay the benefit payments on the pay-as-you-go basis. The liability for Gatsby 45 has continued, and all of these contributions over this period of time hasn't done anything to mitigate or reduce your liability. And so, if you look at the accumulated benefits that you wind up paying over the 10 years, which is the sum of the figures in the city column, we're talking a significant number of dollars going out of the city to pay the benefits, but nothing being done to address the Gatsby 45 issue. Number nine asks what the effect would be for if retired employees changed contributions. Now, we're doing it for zero, which is what they're doing now, if we changed it to 15, 20, or 30%. And then, what the impact would be on the annual required contribution? And the question was phrased in a way that had asked us to address the city and the school. Our answer is only focusing on the city because we didn't have the data for the school, and also, the school is already contributing a minimum of 20%, up to 60%. So, the question really didn't seem to be applicable. There's two different components to our answers. One is assuming there's no change to existing retiree contribution requirements, because that's a tricky area. And then, the second set of results shows what happens if we actually do change existing retiree contributions. And I'll take you through the results just quickly. There's a figure that we, in our report, called the present value of future benefit payments, which means what do we expect the city to actually pay out over the expected lifetimes and working careers of everybody who's either retired now or active? And in our report, we reported that number as $305 million. If we asked for 15% contribution from all future retirees, that figure would go down around $30 million to $277 million. And again, if we asked for 20%, it would go down to 268. And if we asked for 30, it would go down to 250. So, it's sort of just a linear progression, which makes sense. If we're asking the retiree to contribute, then we're going to see a reduction in our cost and our liability. Now, the annual required contribution, which is, as was, as reported in our report, was $20.2 million. And if we get 15%, it's going to go down to $18 million. If we get 20%, it'll go to $17 million. And if we get 30, it'll go to $16 million. And if we ask retirees, people that are actually retired now, to contribute, we start at $305 million, we take our first drop down to $259 million, we go to $244 million, and $213 million. That's a whole other area for exploration if you want to go down that route. But we also added a comment that said, in addition to studying the impact of the contributions, the city should also consider looking at the impact of changing the retirement age to 65 or eliminating benefits once they reach age 65. That's really where you're going to get the biggest bang for your buck. It's not necessarily going to be an easy change to implement, but that's where you're going to see the largest impact to your liabilities. Now, question number 10 asks if retiree healthcare benefits have the same protection under the law as pension benefits? And can municipalities reduce healthcare benefits by mandating cost sharing by participants? And first thing that we did in our answer was throw in the caveat that it's a matter of legal opinion, and neither Harry or I are attorneys. So, we strongly suggest that the school would consult with its legal advisors in addressing the matter, but would say that OPEB is a non-pension benefit, and it's not protected under what they call the Employee Retirement Income Security Act. We also call it by the acronym of ERISA. And those are our 10 questions. Harry, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, the one thing that I wanted to add on question number nine. I know that the focus of the question was on changing contribution rates. There are a couple of different ways also to control the liability or reduce costs. One method is by looking at the trend rates or the growth on your healthcare costs and implement programs where you are bending the trend, you're reducing the healthcare trend. An example would be introducing a wellness program in your system. And for every percentage point that you improve your trend rate, you're seeing about a 14% savings in, or reduction in your liability. The other thing that you might also consider is funding that liability. If that happens, obviously, that would improve the discount rate that we're using, and that also reduces the liability. So, this is just food for thought, and we'll answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Marola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to ask you about question two. Says how much money should WARC have currently in trust to meet its Gatsby 45 recommendations? And you're stating that the city should have $36 million, the school should have $9 million and change. Roughly, we should have in our account right now for that benefit for healthcare, for everybody that we promised healthcare to, $45 million, right?
That's, again, assuming that the funding methodology that the city and the school want to select would be full funding of the ARC. So, basically, anywhere, you know, if you follow the regulation, Gatsby 45, the number is anywhere from zero to the $45 million figure.
Right. So, when somebody says our pension plan is 80% funded or 90% funded, and wow, that's a, you know, we're doing great, this is 0% funded, right?
That's correct.
And we should have $45 million, and we don't. You also mentioned in question one that the actuarial accrued liability for both plans, for city and school, is $271 million, right?
Yep, if the combined results of those.
And then, later on, you mentioned that on question nine and in your reports from the previous year, that our present value of future benefits for the schools is $60 million, and for the city is $313 million, which is around a $373 million present value for those benefits. And that's completely unfunded.
That's correct. The figure that I have in front of me for the city is 305. I'm not sure where you got 313, but yeah, it's the $300 million plus.
You also mentioned in your report on question three, you said while funding the Gatsby 45 liability may be challenging, government entities need to protect credit ratings. This factor could drive the decision to move from the pay-as-you-go method of funding to full or partial funding of the ARC. So, what you're saying is if we continue to ignore this and not fund this, it may have an adverse effect on our credit rating?
It's likely. I know that when municipalities issue bonds now, when they go out for underwriting, they're no, you know, people are no longer buying the pools of bonds without looking at the individual financial statements. And so, one would have to think that if you're a municipality that has a funded liability versus one that doesn't, you're going to have, you have two different entities there with respect to credit risk. And you could see, you could see an impact on your credit rating.
There's also in question eight, you talk about projecting the costs out over the next 20 years. You mentioned that this projection reflects a closed group as of 2009, right?
That's correct.
So, what you're saying is unlike our pension funds, you're assuming that no new employees are coming in in 2009, 2010, 2011, and forward? And so, therefore, we wouldn't have to save to pay for that future employee's benefit, right?
That's correct. When we did this valuation, we drew a line in the sand as of 7/109. And so, it's valued everybody that was in that plan as of that point.
But on the pensions, we don't do that. We assume new employees come in, right?
Well, I think they probably assume that through the salary growth rate.
For the pension projections, the 20-year projections, we assumed that there were new entrants coming in each year, and they're taken account of there. That's for the projections. In the valuation, the valuation simply measures the population as it exists on the valuation date.
So, if we, my question is a basic one. If we added or considered new, that new employees have come on since 2009, then your projections would be higher, correct?
That would be correct, as long as they receive the same benefits.
And for example, you have incremental changes. This year, we go from $7.6 million on the city side, in a few years, 2014, to $8.4 million. But that is for the benefits into the future. It doesn't address what you do on the next page, the fact that we don't have an ARC, and this is on question nine, of $20 million currently. So, what I'm saying is you're going to add the $20 million to the $8 million to get an accurate reflection of what our obligation is going to be, you know, three, four, five years out, right?
Well, you know, if you want to do a back-of-the-envelope calculation, which is what it sort of seems like here, it's the, it's really going to be, it's going to be the net of the two numbers. And so, the $20 million doesn't really have a relationship with, to the 2014 figure. But I mean, you could project that out. It's going to grow similarly. And let's say, for argument's sake, that in 2014, it's $22 million, netted against that $8 million. So, you would see an increase in your obligation of $16 million.
What's our plan currently to pay, in your question two, the current $45 million that we should have in our plan today? What's our strategy to make that difference up today?
We're not aware of a strategy at this point. And again, you know, the city and the school have selected an appropriate funding methodology under Gatsby 45, which is, they call it the pay-as-you-go funding methodology. So, at some point in the future, the city and the school may decide that they want to move in a different direction with respect to that.
Because the costs are going to continue to escalate.
Well, if you can, if you can make contributions to a designated healthcare trust, you can increase your discount rate, which is going to have an impact on your liability and your cost. Now, there's a lot of different reasons why you may or may not want to get involved in a trust. The first one being, is it legal? And, you know, that's a bridge that needs to be crossed. I know that we do a lot of work in the state of New York, and it's outright illegal to fund it. So, you know, there's, it's not even an option. So, here in the state of Rhode Island, it's becoming an option. But then again, you have to look at whether or not your budget supports putting a piece of an accrual aside. And then, the other thing is, you know, these are not benefits similar to a pension plan where they're technically vested. They're almost at-will benefits. They've been negotiated by unions, but they're not, they're not funded. And so, when money's not put into a trust, there's a possibility that a municipality or any entity offering these benefits can say, "We're no longer going to do it," and negotiate their way out of it with the union. And that can cause a little bit of a logistical problem if you've put the money into an irrevocable healthcare trust, whether or not the city could actually get that money back. And some other factors that play into whether or not the city wants to put money into a trust at this time is what's going to happen with nationalized healthcare. And, you know, if we dialed the clock back two years ago, when Obamacare seemed to be something that was going to actually be embraced by the nation, it could have had a significant impact on these OPEB liabilities. And so, for a municipality to have been getting out ahead of it and funding it and putting it into a vehicle where the money may not come back to the taxpayers or to the municipality, might have been a risk too great to bear. So, that's another factor that you have to keep in mind, is, you know, how well can you forecast what's going to happen in the future? And do you really want to tie money up in a way that might not be able to revert back to the city in the event of a significant change?
The, just to kind of sum it up, I know the liability that you had mentioned before, the present value of future benefits with regard to the healthcare is $373 million. And I know that I believe the pension liability is, I know it's over $200 million. I think it's 230. I'm not too sure. Is that's inaccurate, or 240?
Saying the unfunded liability?
Yes.
Just the unfunded.
Yeah, somewhere 240.
240. So, we're looking over $600 million or a half-billion dollars of unfunded liability. Thank you.
Questions from any, excuse me, questions from any of the councilmen? Councilman Collins, do you want them?
Just for a point of clarification, on number eight, I think I understand what's happening here. When you see the city side from 2010 to 2019, there's increments that are increasing over those years. When you look at the school side, the increment increases for a couple of years, and then trends to some middle ground, and then kind of comes back down. That's because two factors, you close the group, and then the differences in benefits between the two groups?
That's accurate. I think I'd throw an additional item in there, and the fact that the benefit window for most employees is only three years. And so, if we took a closer look at the demographics, what we'll probably see is a pretty large variance between the people that are retiring over the next 10 years and then the people that would retire in the 10 years following that. There's probably a gap where they, they'll have a, like a leveling off of the number of folks going out on retirement.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, Councilman Marola, I would entertain a motion that you suspend the rules to open for public comment.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing to public comments.
Seconded by Councilwoman Travis Hall. Councilwoman Stella Wilkinson, on a favor.
Aye.
The opposed advocate. Okay, we'll go through a period here now. Hopefully, we remember my, some of my opening comments. This portion of the, of the meeting and the responses and the questions to the actuarial people that are here is response to PCR 14-11, which was passed by this council sponsored by Councilman Marola and Councilman Solomon on February, and signed into, and approved on February 24th. So, this is that section which we have the opportunity to ask these questions. I would remind you that, again, that this is not a debate. This is a way to ask questions and get answers. And the people from the actuarial firm here are, I guess, they're experts in what they do. We'll treat them in a professional manner, and hopefully, we'll get more facts and make intelligent decisions. Having said that, Mr. Durant.
Thank you, Council President. Let me first say, I want to thank the gentlemen for your presentations. They were excellent. I only felt sorry for the people who aren't versed in discount rates and smoothing and everything else. First time I heard smoothing was at a conference two weeks ago, and I thought they were talking about smoothies. I had no idea. But again, let me commend you for what you did. In all candor, I've been the gadfly here at City Hall for seven years. My big issue was pensions and healthcare. I read an article in Business Week seven years that said the cities and towns have to start addressing it. Candidly here in WARC, we haven't. We haven't given, we've given it lip service. Now, let me tell you from a taxpayer's point of view. I had a whole prepared presentation here. I'm going to forego it. I sat here in the audience, and I heard $350 million, $550 million here, $270 million. All I do know is an article I read in the local newspaper two weeks ago, where the chief financial officer for the city said, "For our maximum tax increase, we can raise taxes by $8 million." That's for our maximum tax increase. After what Councilman Marola was informing us tonight, we're looking just for the unfunded healthcare of $20 million a year. It doesn't add up. When are we going to start addressing the issues? Now, in due deference to my friend Smerving, Texas, love the city, it's terrific. Go Cowboys. Let's get to the real world here. I have spoken ad infinitum at the city council. Gentlemen and the ladies here can attest to it, have been here for seven years. The 8% return, I said was ridiculous seven years ago. Now, you mentioned we're looking at a 7.75 or a 7 and 1/2. You're probably aware of a couple of things. CalPERS, and I'm sure you're familiar with CalPERS, just was going to institute a 7.75. I think they did. They were castigated in the Wall Street Journal. Governor Brown is now looking that over. He just had an article the other day in Business Week. And the reason they settled on a 7 and a 7, 7.75 was they got pushed back from the cities, just like you're talking here, just like Councilman Marola mentioned. If we reduce the discount rates, we have to increase our expenses for pensions. Now, another point. So, California's looking at that right now with the 7.75. It's been proven to be bogus, but CalPERS is going to hold tight because they can't have the cities and towns, they're complaining too much. Fitch, I'm sure you're familiar with that rating agency. Just last week, I read in Bloomberg, they're going to come out when they analyze the cities and towns budgets, they're going to analyze it at a 7% return. They're going to discount anyone who's above a 7%. They have been castigated in national press that 7% is even too high. Now, have you ever heard of Dr. Hussman? He runs a couple mutual funds, been very successful, pedigrees up to gazoo. He runs a couple mutual funds, been very successful, pedigrees up to gazoo, University of Michigan PhD, Stanford and all that. He just gave a conference at Morningstar, go Google it. I watched it the other day. And he's talking about a rate of return for the S&amp;P. He did an evaluation back to the Depression. 6.3% for the S&amp;P. That's historical. So we can take our weighting, we can take our, whatever we want to call it, but the reality of the situation is the S&amp;P has returned since the Great Depression, 6.3. So let's get real here. I appreciate the fact that you've come here, and in all due deference, as I say, you gave an excellent presentation, but let's get real. You owe it to the employees here in the city of Warwick. They worked hard for their pensions. But I don't think we're being truthful with them. I really don't. I'm a little disappointed also, and let me, let me make a side note. I don't see the mayor here tonight. We went to the conference, Lorraine Miller and Bob Cushman, we went to the conference that Gina Raimondo just had, and Ernie Almonte, two weeks ago. We met Alan Fung going down the elevator. I asked him, "Why are you here?" He said, "The most important issue facing the city right now is pensions and healthcare." So the reality of the situation, and I see the council president's going to ask me to get back on topic, the, I know you well enough. The bottom line is here, when are we going to start getting real? And what I would like to see going forward, and I asked this prior to you coming in tonight, why don't we go back and do an analysis on a 6% return? A 6.5% return, which I think is more realistic? And let us know what our expenditures are going to be. Now, some of the questions, let's get down to the actual plans themselves. The big enchilada in our pension plans is police and fire one. We all know that. What I am concerned about is what Councilman Marola just pointed out, this year we're investing $15 million. We're going to be up to $30 million in 10 years. I told you about the 8% cap we have for maximum tax increase. Where is this money coming from? Now, I would hope you actuaries will go back and start asking the question, I'm sure you're aware of the fact, we're giving a 3% caller in that right now. Is that reasonable? Is that reasonable? Are we going to have to start addressing that issue? These are the kind of questions, I think, if we're going to finally come up and step up to the plate and do a meaningful, meaningful reform here in the city, then I think we have to address that. Now, on the healthcare issue, thank God, you must be from New York, right? One of our councilwomen's from New York too, from Brooklyn, but I don't know if she brags about that anymore. But the bottom line is, you're the first one who came in here and said maybe two things. In deference to Paul, former councilman and school committee chairman Cushman, who's been beat up in the papers incessantly in the last few weeks, you did a hell of a job with the healthcare for the school department. Finally, we see the disparity between the schools and the city. Okay? So thank you. The reality of the situation is, I would think the council president and the city councillors, after we finish tonight, would be calling a meeting between the school department and the city and see why there's such a disparity with the healthcare. That's number one. That's basic. You pointed it out. We've tried to point it out for months, years, and they don't want to listen to us. You, you made it black and white tonight. My next question is, and I hate to say this, let me ask you a question if I'm allowed. How many, how many programs do you see where retirees have absolutely no copay for a Cadillac plan?
It's not as uncommon as you would think. I would say probably of the 150 or so entities that we do work for, you're probably looking at 30% or more that probably have little or no contribution.
So 70% do. So I'd like to see Warwick getting to 70% as opposed to 30%. I think it's only fair. I think it's only fair. We can no longer afford, I think what's going to happen here, and I hate to be the bearer of bad tidings, but I will be, I'll be the skunk at the party. I think we're going to get to the point in this city where healthcare is going to become an anomaly. It's going to go. I think that workers in the city have to realize, unfortunately, we're going to have to support your pension programs. We can't do it both. You know the numbers. You've seen the numbers. We can't do it both any longer. The day of reckoning is here. We have an $8 million cap, and we're banding around $20 million. You had just mentioned also with the rating agencies, we ought to be concerned about that. They want to see money stop being put away for the healthcare. We can't afford it. In the present structure, we can't afford it. One last thing, because I know there's a lot of people behind me. I do think with reference to the rate of returns, going back to what Councilman Marola said, I don't have, I have information here, and mine is dated, but I was just looking at it before I came in here tonight. 2.1 the return, 10 years, police and fire one, the big enchilada, the big bogey in the room, 2.1. I've heard the seven years, 8% return. That's all I've heard. How much does that cost us? How much is that going to continue to cost us? I think we have to be real. Let me summarize. I think we have to be real in our projections. I think we have to get away from this 8%, 7%, 7.5, we have to get down to 6, and let's get it real, because you're running a balance, not you, the city's running a balance program, 60/40. 60% equities, 40%. You referred to it, I looked over the information, you have a balance fund. You don't even have a straight equity fund. So the bottom line is 6% is more reasonable. So let's start with that. Number two, I would ask the council president to call that symposium between the city council and between the school department and start working on a healthcare program that's good for everybody, employees as well as taxpayers. Because I got to tell you one thing, the taxpayers have been forgotten for years. All we do is get the bills. And thirdly, thank God, we finally have a discussion here going on the city of Warwick. It's taken seven years. Thank you very much.
Hello, Richard Langsack, 170 Budlong Farm Road, Warwick. Through the chair, I have a question about the defined, about the 401K program. The actuary suggested that on a defined contribution program, the benefit could run out during the retirement period. But as somebody who's been working in this business for many years, I remember that when you retire, you can also buy an annuity. I think he forgot to mention that. Maybe he could comment on a defined contribution program where the employee is encouraged to buy an annuity when he retires.
You may ask.
Well, my only comment is that in practice, I see very few people buying annuities from IRAs or 401Ks. It's certainly under 5% nationwide are doing that. Yes, it's certainly an option, and, you know, I've considered it on my personal behalf and would encourage other people to consider it, but it is an extremely underused option.
Well, perhaps it's not very well written up by the press, maybe somebody should do that kind of thing. On the healthcare side, I was a little curious. I was looking recently at some state figures about state employees and how much they were paying per month for, for benefits. And it seems to me that in the early 2000s, they were paying something like $150 a month, that was the cost of the plan. And then in the mid 2000s, the plan was going at around $700 a month per family or something like that. And now, just five years later, it seems to me that, that the program is running close to $2,000 a month for, for a family plan, at least as far as the state and perhaps here in Warwick. So I'm just wondering about this 5% projection, it just seems to be a little bit off, you know, it seems like it's probably a hope, not a reality. As, as a third-party administrator, I can tell you that the most frustrating part of running a benefit plan is watching the claims come in and get beat year after year after year, which, which I have experienced personally. So I, I think we need to understand that these, this healthcare cost is just out of sight. It's not under any control. The, the technology just keeps coming in at higher and higher levels, and we're looking at hospital payments that just go through the roof. And the other thing we have to remember, in the state of Rhode Island, the state actually taxes the hospitals 5% for all the benefits paid to the people. And that alone creates a huge problem. So I think that this is, you, you really help, because we've been saying these kinds of things for years. And to have an open forum about this is great. But, but the one thing that, that was kind of a little bit, you know, a little bit difficult to deal with, was you were saying that the city retirees have a different, the, the results are different for the city retirees than for the school department retirees, but you never really say why. And I suspect that the reason why is, of course, that the city employees and their spouses get free healthcare, and the school department employees have to pay for the healthcare after they're retired. And in many cases, the school department employees fall into a state plan, which is managed a little bit differently. The one question I have for, for you folks is, if we moved the healthcare program into the state plan, like, like 30 cities and towns do in Warwick, I'm, I'm, Rhode Island, I'm under the impression that the state is now going to backcharge some of this unfunded liability to the, to the cities and towns that, that are in this plan, and it will include the teachers of, of the city of Warwick. If we moved the city healthcare plan into the state plan, would it be better or worse for the city of Warwick? And maybe that's a question I could ask of the consultant.
Sure, go ahead, take it.
I think it's difficult for us to answer that question on the fly, so to speak, since we haven't done an analysis and comparison between this, your plan and the state plan. I would say, based on our experience with some other states, for example, New York, depending on where you live, it, if you are upstate versus downstate, it does make a difference. And basically, any upstate community, because of the differences in the healthcare costs, they are better off not participating in the state plan, while people, you know, cities, municipalities closer to the, to New York City, you know, they, they benefit from the healthcare, from the state plan. So unless somebody goes in and does a detailed analysis and comparison of the two plans, I wouldn't be able to, to, to give you an opinion on that. However, what I will say is that your current rates, your current trend, it's probably one of the best that we've seen. So somebody's doing something right as far as managing the healthcare costs within the city and the school district.
Well, of course, you realize that the, the city employees' plan is, is managed regionally by a quasi-public agency, and that quasi-public agency perhaps is a little bit late in some of its, you know, projection. So maybe that's part of the reason why. But, but in any case, I do appreciate you coming, and I appreciate the city council putting this together. This was really a, a great forum, and thanks a lot.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Don Chahasky. Looking at our unfunded pension, and, oh, looking at the unfunded pension we have, and the benefits pension, and the liability.
Can't, we can't hear you, sir. Bring the mic closer to your mouth so we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Oh, Don Chahasky, by the way. Don Chahasky, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can, thank you.
Looking at the unfunded pension, and the benefits unfunded pension, and the actual dollars and liability. Are we talking around 700 million, a little more or a little less? What are we talking about for a figure? You're the actuaries, so what's the answer?
The unfunded liability?
Yes, you can include all of them, when we include benefits, unfunded, unable to pay, that means, and pensions, unable to pay what the demand is. What is that figure?
Zero.
Zero what?
Dollars.
No, we ask you the amount. Could it be 700 million, the unfunded? I know you're not zero. So what is that figure?
Well, if you're asking how many dollars, I think currently?
I'm talking about the liability. Gentlemen, I'm talking about the liability we have right now throughout the years, not last year or next year, total accumulated liability. What is it?
The unfunded liability?
Sir?
Sorry. The unfunded liability is about 240 million.
Oh, we couldn't, benefits and we including pensions unfunded, is that what you're saying is?
On the, the four pension plans combined, the current accrued liabilities compared to assets, about 240 million unfunded.
Boy, that changes from day to day, week to week. Now, if we were lucky, unfortunate, or if we had a demand to pay $2 million a year to pay that debt off, with changes or without changes, how long would that take?
$2 million a year?
Yes, and looking at 700 million, looking at without changes, and looking at with changes, you can give me two figures. What would that cost? I know I got the real tough ones, I know, that's why I gave.
Are you saying how long it will take to pay 240 million of liability off paying $2 million a year?
What's the figure? I'm not hearing you. What'd you say? What is your answer to my question?
We're asking what the question is.
If we were lucky enough or unlucky, and if we had a demand to pay $2 million off a year to cover that 200 million or 300 million, how many years would it take us, that's the city, the taxpayers, to pay that off?
100 years.
Well, how many years?
100.
Right. Are you going to be around 100? Is your kid's going to be around 100? We're passing a liability on to them?
My kids probably won't.
All right, we, we got the answer from you, and it sounds ridiculous to accept that, but that's your answer. Now, I'm looking at a timeline on how you work with the city hall administration.
Well, I think we need to clarify that you're, you're paying on an amortization schedule much shorter than 100 years.
Who is, who's, you got a guarantee?
Well, of course not.
That's going to be paid off in, in short time? You, what to call, a fortune teller or something, is that true?
Sir, I think I said in my comments at the outset, we weren't going to engage in a debate here. We were going to ask questions and get answers.
All right, I'm getting off. Another question. And the timeline, when did you inform the city, either directly for the year 2009 or interim reports? How many times and when did you report to the city? That's the mayor or the city director, finance director? How did, how does that work for a timeline? Boy, I give you guys are tough questions, you know.
If we don't have answers, we don't have the answers.
We provide valuation reports to the city once a year, keeping in mind that the municipal plan is done every other year, and the three police-fire plans are done every other year.
Now, thank you for that. Now, do you have interim reports that are separate from the yearly reports?
No.
You don't? Oh, that's interesting. So, all right, you answered that question. In the last five years, has the liability increased, and then how much has it increased? Or am I dreaming, did it decrease, the liability to the city in those same areas, pensions, benefits?
The unfunded liability has, of course, increased because of the economic meltdown in 2008, 2009.
Well, now, let's just back up five years. Has it continually, whether the meltdown was there or not, did it increase, and how much did it increase each year, or in total, talking five or six years?
It's gone up and down over the years.
It did, so, so your yearly reports could be, five years ago was up, and maybe four years ago was down, and three years. What consistency do you have when you average out going up or down, or was it three years up and two years down? How did that work out?
I've only been the actuary since 2001, so I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, yeah, that's good. We can back up to 2001. Did the liability to the city and the taxpayer continually go up, or did it go down, and what years did it go down, and how many years did it go up?
Mr. President?
I don't have that information.
Mr. President, I, I think we can, he can probably answer most of these questions if we give him a copy of the report. It's in the report if you'd like to get a copy.
Okay, this gentleman's going to give you a report, Mr. Marola?
No, we have the report, we can give you a copy, and it would answer all your questions.
I, I'm going to leave, and I'm going to be amazed that actuaries cannot answer that question. question. Have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Nado.
Mr. President, there was a lot of talk tonight about the city liabilities and the school liabilities. Just to clear it up, my name is Eugene Nado, and I'm a member of the school committee. But I'm speaking for myself and no others. I want to make that clear. I'm speaking for myself and no others. But it'll be quick. Mr. Marola said the rate of return for the last 10 years was what? Average wise?
Five.
5%?
Four to five.
Okay. And you're saying that for the next 10 years, things are going to be different. What was your estimate for the next 10 years? That's the question. Approximately, 7%, 8%? Are you saying to do it? Yeah. Yeah.
7% to 8%.
All right. This is what I can't understand, Mr. President. In six years, the national debt is going to be $25 trillion. 25, 000, 000, 000, 000, 000. In six to seven years, $1 trillion is going to go for the interest on that debt. This country cannot afford it. The state of Rhode Island's debt is going to be $14 billion. The city of Warwick's debt, as you heard tonight with these hundreds of millions, is going to approach $900 million. In six to seven years, when 10,000 students are graduating, how in heaven's name can you predict 7% or 8% in seven years when we have a tsunami of debt drowning everybody? You can't tell me, all these people, all the workers, all the students, that that return is going to come in. Nobody has ever seen this kind of debt for this country and everybody else. The only way they can make up that debt is by taxes in all three divisions, national, state, and city, taxes. How is it going to be possible? Thank you.
Mr. Cushman?
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Bob Cushman, former city councilman and chairman of the Warwick School Committee. First of all, I just want to thank you people for coming here tonight. I want to thank the council for actually, you know, starting to take a look at this issue. This is a very important issue. And I hope, as the treasurer mentioned in the letter, that this is the beginning of the discussions and not the end. What I'm afraid of is that, you know, you're going to pass some pension reforms tonight, and it's going to be a headline grab, and everybody's going to go home and think everything is fine. And that's my fear. I just want to start off, I want to ask this question, and here it is. Can the city of Warwick continue to fund a budget that pays retirement benefits at required actuarial levels, fund annual health care benefits and cost of living increases for active employees, maintain all other municipal programs, services, and also fund the school budget? I don't think there's anybody here tonight that can answer that question. And that question needs to be answered. And the way you answer that question is you do some analysis and you present the facts. Now, I'm a business analyst by trade, so I ask a lot of questions. A lot of people get annoyed with me all the time, too. But, you know, hopefully through the council president, I did some of my own analysis. I would like to have an opportunity to pass this out to you all because I want to make some references to it. Is it all right for me to do that?
Sure.
What I'm trying to do here is, we got to take a look at, and I think the actuarial firms could help out with this situation, but, so let me just ask first some general questions. I think in, for the actuarial.
Excuse me a minute, Mr. Cushman. Can you hang on just one second?
Okay.
We're through with the general section of it, so, we're done with the stenographer part necessary. If you want to. No, this is not, this is not the testimony, okay? Thank you very much. Again, I want to remind everybody that we had two forms of, we had the stenographer on earlier for the public hearing section, but now the stenographer is done. But also, all comments are recorded on disk in the system that we have. As you know, this meeting is online by anybody that wants to go, not online, but the minutes of the meeting, so. And then I just remind, so please speak into the mic anytime you have a question or an answer. Also, Mr. Cushman, I'd like to remind you that we're here for questions and answers, not for presentations. If you want to use this as a tool for those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cushman.
I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I guess the first thing I want to talk about is, with the help of Councilman Marola, I was able to get some of the information. I don't think the general public has seen some of this information. You put out, in response to answers to the questions, you put out forecasts for annual required contributions for each of the four pension plans in the city. And I don't think you did that for the, for the health care. I know you put the, on question eight, you talked about the actual cost for the retiree health care, but that didn't, that's not actually the annual required contribution going out to 2019, correct?
It's just the benefit payment. You're correct.
So is it possible to get the annual required contributions going out to 2019? And for the, I guess to make this analysis a little bit more complete?
Not on the fly. I mean, it's, if we had been asked in advance to prepare that, we would have come with it.
Okay. I mean, is it something that could be done in the future for the sake of the council?
If the city and school desire to engage our firm to prepare such a forecast, it's certainly within our capabilities to do that for you.
Okay. And would you say that would provide more accurate information going out into the future as to the funding?
I'm not sure where you're going with this report, so I couldn't answer that question.
And for the municipal pensions, police and fire, is it true that, I think this year in July, you're going to issue an up-to-date report on police one, fire one, police two, and fire one? Is that correct? Are you going to be updating and providing actuarial reports in 2011 for police one, fire one, police two, and fire two?
We will do June 30, 2011 reports.
Okay. So those reports will have a little bit more accurate information in terms of the weighted, the smoothing and all that stuff, in terms of the contributions that are going to be required for the city to make the pension funds?
They'll be more up to date. The projections do have any asset information through June 30, 2010 included in them.
Okay.
And the projections also assume that the 8% return is meant on market going forward. So any deferred losses currently in there are recognized. So there's no off-sheet losses.
Okay.
That should come in.
Okay. So my first question is, when we talk about, we know what I did in this chart here is going to 2011, all I did was add up your annual required contributions for all four plans. I think it's important for us, we can't look at this piecemeal. You know, every pension fund, it represents expenses, and expenses affect the budget. So you can't just look at, okay, let's just look at police two and see what's going on here. You've got to look at everything in totality. So what I did is, I added up all the annual required contributions, and you can see that's what those lines are going across. The red line is your current taxpayer pension contributions going out, I think, over 30 years. The line underneath that is the pension contributions with the proposed reforms. For health care, I couldn't get the annual required contributions because they weren't available. So my question is, right now, we're paying about $12 million on the city side for active employee health care. And I think you said it was 7.4 million for retiree health care, but the annual required contribution actually is about 20 million? So in reality, if the city chose to fund a trust plan, we should put $13 million more into that?
Well, the mechanics of it would be, you'd throw the whole 20 million in, and you'd pay benefits out of it. So you'd come down, net 13.
Okay. So, I mean, the only reason I'm saying that, right now, the municipal budget is about $116 million. So you're really looking at needing $13 million more in revenue. That's an 11% increase. So, you know, to, right now, that is, like Councilman Marola said, that's probably impossible to do. So my point of this chart here is, I think we should be able to track the annual required contributions for health care for employees. And at certain points in time, we should be able to find out, what's the total expected cost going to be? So for example, if we go out to 2020 on the line here, and you could see that pension costs are going to be about $34 million. Now, what, we don't know what the health care cost is going to be, but it's probably going to be over $20 million based on just the fact that it's 20 million today, correct?
Only you would know that because you developed the numbers that went into this chart. So for me to answer that question, I'd have to know what your underlying assumptions are.
No, well, I'm saying, your annual required contributions for health care going out to 2019 is going to, each year, it's going to grow. Isn't it going to grow, the annual required contribution?
I'm not sure what factors you used here, but we disclosed our factors for trend in our answers to our Q and A. And we also put the trends that we expected this city to experience in our report. Now, I would assume that to some degree, you incorporated those inflation factors in there. And if you did, then mathematically, assuming the way you calculated your figures is accurate, then your statement would be accurate.
Yeah, the projected health care cost, which I didn't get into, was taking the current cost at 2011 and using your factors going forward.
Then assuming your mathematical theory and your calculations are accurate, then the numbers are as you state. But I'm not verifying that your numbers are accurate.
No, I understand that. Now, one thing that we don't have in here is, we don't have the retiree health care payment. So, you know, as of 2020, according to the calculations with inflation, we're saying that health care for active employees is going to increase to about $22 million. The pension costs are going to be about $34 million. Then we got to add in the annual required contributions for the retirees, which is going to make the cost even higher. Now, one of the things that Councilman Marola brought up is, you're using a closed plan, I guess, you said for health.
Closed group. We're not introducing, we're not taking into consideration new entrants. What we are taking into consideration with respect to our pay-as-you-go projection, which was a 10-year in our Q and A, is the fact that some of the folks that are in the active pool right now will move themselves into the retiree pool gradually over those 10 years.
Yeah, and I think you put some, you put some figures where you associated active employee retirement costs going forward. Now, if the council requested this, could you provide, I don't know, a 10-year projection of what the cost would be for health care for the future employees as they join the city? If we keep employment levels at the same?
Yeah. Based, we could develop that based on the assumptions that are in our report at the request of the council.
Okay. And the only reason I say that is, you need to get all the variables together. You know, when you go all the way out into 2034, I have pension and health care, not for retirees, just for active people, growing to about $113 million. Let me just make my final point, and that'll be it. The bottom line is, we can do the math to find out projections as to how much it's going to cost us year to year to fund retiree benefits and to fund current employee health care, correct? And we can also fund the annual required contributions for pensions. So we can find the answers to these numbers. And as Gina Raimondo has said, is, this is all about math. The question has to be, is, do we have a math problem? Can we raise revenue fast enough to meet these future expenditures? I know right now, looking at this, we can't, especially with the cap on the amount of money. I think Mr. Duran said we can only raise about $8 million a year. The way these figures are going up, they're going faster than the amount of money we can raise taxes. And I don't think it's fair to the employees. It's not fair to the taxpayers. You know, the unions need to be part of this. They need to understand what's going on. I don't think anybody's really telling them the truth about what is going on and how much these costs are going to escalate. So the bottom line is this, if we don't have enough money to fund this stuff, because we need to give people cost of living increases, we need to buy police cars, we need to buy fire apparatus, what's probably going to happen is, we're going to continue to do that because we have to do that. We have to plow roads, we have to do everything that we have to do. And you know what's going to happen with the annual required contributions? We're not going to make them. We're not going to make them to the extent that we should make them. That's why we have a police and fire one right now, because nobody made any kind of contributions. That's why we have a health care system right now, a health care plan that's funded at zero. So we have some tough decisions that have to be made in the future. If our revenue can only go up by a certain cap, we have to figure out then, we're going to have to do something to modify these benefits. And let me just tell you something right now, I'm looking at this chart. The mayor's pension proposals are at that green line, and look at the red line. You're not going to get any significant savings into 2023, and it's miniscule. Those lines are next to each other. So look at, the actuarial firm for the city did the savings analysis. There's no savings here. You don't need to act on this legislation tonight. You need to do your homework. You need to find out what needs to be done in terms of modifications to pensions and health care to do what Gina Raimondo is saying, solve the problem once and for all. Mayor Abadiehan called these changes incremental. We cannot afford incremental change. We passed the legislation, everybody feels great, we put it on our reelection palm cards that we passed pension reform, and we do nothing. So we need to make real changes, not incremental changes. Thank you.
Just going to make a, just a comment. I'm watching the clock very carefully here. We have council rules. We have three ordinances before us tonight. We will hear those ordinances tonight. And we have other items. Council rule says nothing new after 11:30. So please keep your comments.
I won't go to 11:30.
As brief as you can. Thank you. I know you won't.
Just to reiterate what Mr. Cushman said, I also agree that anything that's on this table tonight should be deferred and should be a further look at what we're doing here in the council and the city of Warwick. But let me ask you gentlemen a question. You've been, how long have you been in the actuaries at the city of Warwick? 10 years? Has the mayor approached you at all during that time and asked you to run a scenario as to any type, any type of form or negotiation he's going to go and get into, and what impact that would be on either the pension plans or the health plans of the city?
Most of the time when proposals have been made, I'm sorry. Most of the time when proposals have been made, we've been asked to provide an actuarial analysis in advance.
In advance?
Yes.
When's the last time you were asked to do that analysis? Can you recall?
No, actually, I don't, because it's been several years since there's been.
Been several, and we've negotiated a couple of contracts since then. But let me just go back.
But without, without changing the benefit packages for pension.
Yeah, just go back to really the start of this. I don't know if you were here, but there was a comment made by Councilman Solomon that there was legal advice given to this council, and tell me if I'm wrong, Councilman, legal advice given to this council where that they don't have the authority to take action when it comes to these pension plans. Is that correct, Councilman? Have you, since that advice was given to both the council and to the mayor, have you seen any changes come forth from the mayor saying that that advice has changed?
Mr. Dempsey, your reason, your reason is to question the guests that are here to answer actuarial problems, not to pass history of this council.
Well, as a taxpayer, I find that very significant. Because if this council has determined that they have had advice that says they cannot act on these particular actions, then I don't know what the mayor is doing in submitting these, this type of proposal to the council. If they have had this advice and it told they can't act. Go back to what the gentleman here regarding health plan. I know this is zero funding, we're, and we're getting to Gatsby 45, where we still have, we should have at least, I believe you said, 36 million in the pot already. We have zero. You're now starting with that piece here, and now you're moving forward in terms of the ARC, the actual accrued liability there in your annual commitment. But what is the difference now, the city being on a pay-as-you-go, what is the difference between that pay-go this year and what they would do if this was a funded plan? What would the amount be? What would the amount be?
Well, we, we provided some analysis of what the difference in liability and cost would be if we were to use assumptions that we would apply to this plan if it were funded. And our assumption would be that if the plan were funded, we'd raise the discount rate to 8%. Now, the consensus in this room would seem to want to push back a little bit on that. But if we were to increase the discount rate to the 8%, then we would see a decrease in our liability and the cost of about 45%.
And the, the actuarial piece would be what? You would, the piece that you would have under the accrual formula would be?
45% less than 36 million.
So about 18 million, about 17 million, maybe?
A little more than that. Make it 20, just.
The 20 million versus the pay-go, which is now 8 million?
Well, no, it's, well, the pay-go, the pay-go is not really going to change, okay? Because you're going to still be paying the cost.
Oh, I understand.
And you're going to be adding that additional funding piece to the equation.
But they would be put, the city would be told to put in 20 million versus the 8 million, because they are in a pay-go.
Correct. That is a fact, yes.
You've set up a situation here where I'm not sure where any municipality would go in terms of your argument that there's now, if you do go to a trust fund, there is arguments that if things do change, that you can't get money out of that trust fund. But yet, the rating agencies say they are looking for a trust fund, but that could be the disadvantage to the city to set one up, and they stay with the pay-as-you-go. Where would you come down on that? What type of recommendation do you have to municipality where this, you know, situation is out there, where the rating agencies are saying one thing, but the city, if it does take that types of action, could be in a situation where they actually lose money?
You know, one of the things that I think that we're experiencing here now with respect to Gatsby 45 in this city and in a lot of other locations in the United States, is the fact that it's still fairly new. And so, you know, I hate to trivialize or minimize what I think $36 million in a net OPEB liability looks like, because I don't think, you know, that that's, that's significant of a number, considering some of the roads that I've traveled with respect to OPEB liabilities. I think that right now, it's probably prudent to sit on the sidelines a little bit and wait it out before you go sticking that money into a trust and may have some, some impending issues with respect to getting it back. The prevailing theory is 2012 or 2014, the country, if, you know, with the, with the situations that's going on now, well, they've figured out what it's going to do with national healthcare. And if we switch up to a different payer structure, having this money inside of a trust is going to only be a detriment to the city. So I think it's prudent right now that, that that's something that we consider very carefully before we go, we don't lock the money up, that we, that we go, we tread very carefully here. I know there's some costs involved. I know that there's some credit rating issues. But I mean, those are manageable in the short term. If this was 2032, and we've never addressed it and have ignored what's happened on the national scene, then I agree with you. We've gone in the wrong direction.
In respect to what you do, what is the cost to the city of adding this plan, which is being proposed, proposed this evening, which if you, I mean, I just saw this for the first time tonight, shows that there are minimal savings, and if there's any savings, you have to wait till the year 20, 2035 to get any. Is the adminis, what is the administrative burden to run an additional pension plan? You know, you're up, we're up to what, four? We have four now? Five? Five now? We go up to six, and with different parameters and stuff? Is, from your aspect, is the actuarial cost any greater?
Mr. Dempsey, I'm a little bit confused. What plan is being proposed here tonight? There's no plan that I know of that's being proposed other than responses, other than responses to questions. This chart that was given to us was prepared by Mr. Cushman. It's not part of any, it's not part of any plan proposed to the city council. What we have here is actuarial data that they're giving us scenarios and answers to the questions that were given to these people ahead of time to answer. There is no plan before the city.
All right. The city has, the city has been presented by the mayor with the modifications to the, their new pension plan for new employees coming on in the year 2012. And there's some modifications to that plan.
That's not what we're discussing.
I agree. But I'm talking in terms of the actuarial cost to the city of assuming another plan on top of those plans. Is there a difference, is there additional actuarial cost to the city in calculating what's going to happen under this scenario, where we know that the savings are shown to be minimal under this plan?
Yeah, that, that's a question better directed to the pension folks.
Okay.
And my answer is that I haven't thought about it very long, but it's going to be marginal. It's going to be trivial compared to the savings under the plan.
Well, the savings under the plan have shown to be trivial in terms of, in what's being offered to the City of Warwick. But I agree with the, that's just a comment, and it's something that is being proposed here. But, you know, something that I think we should acknowledge that there is cost out there in terms of the actuarial studies that have to be done in terms of other plans in place. Thank you very much.
And just for the record, I want to make it very clear that there is no plan before this council, and there's nothing being considered by this council at this time, either in a resolution or in a, in an ordinance format. We're answering questions, that's all. Mr. Kennedy.
How you doing, sir? This is, these people that have been up here speaking are not out to take anybody's pension away. I just want to let you know that. We're up here to make sure you have one when you retire. That, I mean, that's what we've been speaking about. We just want to make sure that the people that have worked for this city for so long actually get to reap their benefits of their retirement. Okay? And so, there's no ills between anybody in here. We want to make sure that the city's funding your pension, and you're going to get what you were told to get. But we want to be real here, that, you know, 8% return is not unrealistic. I mean, I, I work in the dreaded private sector, and I contribute to my own 401K. And I watch it and see how it does, okay, over the years. Now, let me tell you, there's no 8% return in the last five years. Yeah, I mean, and since 2001, since you took it over, there's probably been a couple times before the bubble that we were making more than 20. Let's be realistic. My question to you is, is, is if we scared some of the employees here, and they're saying, hey, listen, we're getting out of here, we're going to retire, let's say 25% of the employees here right now said, I'm done. Can the pension plan handle that?
First of all, I'm not sure that 25% of the employees are eligible for retirement.
Well, if they work more than 10 years or in between 10 and 20, if I'm not mistaken, they're, they're eligible for a pension, correct?
Yeah.
Whether they want to stay with the city or not. I mean.
But not immediately.
Okay, they'd have to reach, what, 55 or?
55 in the municipal.
55, okay. Well, let's say 15% is eligible. I just want to just, I'm not, I'm not.
I haven't done the numbers on stress testing for a large wave of retirements.
But, I mean, the pension contributions now, what I'm trying to get at is, the people that are paying in now, are they paying for the people that have retired? You know, that's one of my questions, as far as the people retired collecting what they've put in. You know, I mean, because right now, if that's the case, if they're paying for the people that are retired now, you're going to have to have twice as many people working in the city to pay for the people that are retiring next.
The answer is a mix of both. The unfunded liability is due in part to retirees. And so, active employees and the city are paying off that unfunded liability, some of which could be a portion to current retirees.
Okay. Now, my next question is, and this is to the members, because actually, the employees of the, of the city, if we were to take, if they were to take 20% co-pay, and don't anybody scream at me here, but, and put that towards their pension, you know, liability, would that offset or ease the pain down the road for both the person that's receiving the pension and the city in general?
The city has a liability for the current plan, the current plan members. Any proposal to radically change the current design could end up saddling the city with higher costs in the short term and leave the long-term costs unchanged. Depends on the details. We'd have to do an analysis.
All right. And my last question is, to the, to the employees here, this is your pension. I mean, if I was you, I'd be up here asking the questions, not this, the taxpayers or the citizens. I mean, I'm kind of concerned that you guys aren't up here asking the questions. I don't know if everybody's telling you the truth or not, but, you know, this is reality. We're just trying to, we're just trying to inform everybody. And I thank you, gentlemen, for coming here and enlightening some of these people that are on this plan, and the council for, for having us speak. I appreciate that very much, and everybody have a great day, okay?
Just, just a clarification, Mr. Kennedy, on what we're discussing now is, again, not the pensions. The three pensions will be up, it's the next item on the agenda. And people will have an opportunity to respond to those pensions regarding the pension. And I know the city needs to make a presentation with regard to those pensions as well. So that's the format we're going, that's why I'm a little bit concerned about time. Plus, we have a full finance docket in front of us, which we haven't even approached yet.
Good evening. Mike Mulholland, I've got three easy questions that you both can answer in turn. Would you describe your models as stochastic or deterministic?
Want to repeat that? I didn't quite hear Mr. Muller.
Would you describe your models as stochastic or deterministic?
The model in the pension plan is deterministic.
Okay.
When we set the assumptions, we do stochastic testing on it to determine what could go wrong with that assumption, or determine what's the likelihood bias of that assumption. But the model itself is deterministic.
Okay.
OPEB follows the same methodology.
Okay. Would you, I haven't had a chance to read the reports, I have no idea how big it is. Would you say that your report is robust enough to recreate a model of it if it went to another firm?
With respect to ours, I mean, you, you know, we look at it, the drivers being the assumptions, the benefits and the census. And so, what you can clearly see in our report is the assumptions. You can see the benefits described. You don't have the census, so without the census, I think you'd be really hard-pressed. I mean, you'd be looking at average ages, and I don't think you have enough information to do it.
I would agree with that, that census is going to be one of your problems. Could another firm, given the data, take our report and come close? Yes, I think so.
Okay. It's all about getting as close as possible, right? So the third question, would the reports be available in electronic format? It's a kind of open question to anybody? To the general public, published?
That's got to be the city's.
I will. And my final question for you, sir, why is it, and maybe you've explained it, and I just didn't get it, why is it you chose not to use a birth-death model to, or maybe we should call it a hire-retire model, to show incoming people to the OPEB system and the people who have retired out of the current system?
Are you talking about with respect to the question that we answered regarding benefit payment projections?
Right. The question is, what was the reasoning behind the exclusion of new hires?
Well, we didn't, basically, we weren't given any assumptions on, with respect to when somebody retires, what the characteristics of a new hire would be, would appear like. And we were also responding to the question as asked by the council, saying, give us a projection. And they weren't throwing those, those assumptions into, into the mix. It certainly could be done. The city would have to engage us to do additional study of that nature.
And also, when you're doing a 20-year projection, there's very few people hired after today that will impact the benefit payments within the 20 years.
I get that. My question was on why.
The accrual side.
That the flow of people in and out of the system, why we closed the system to exclude inbound. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Marola.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Councilman moves to close the public hearing, seconded by Councilman Gluski, Councilman Travis, Councilman Vella Wilkinson. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. Five minutes sharp, and then we're going to move on with PCO 2A-10 ordinance regarding pension ordinance changes for new employees, fire. Counsel, come to order. Okay, as you recall, I said we would move these three ordinances up to the next, so the first one, PCO-2A-10, an ordinance regarding pension ordinance change for new employees, fire. Committee report ordinance.
Let's move to the floor without a recommendation.
Move to the floor for action. Councilman Colin Twannell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move favorable action for purposes of discussion. I know that Oscar's at the, at the table and wants to, wants to begin to introduce the changes to this particular piece of legislation. I'll let him do that with a second.
Councilman Colin Twannell moves favorable action for the purpose of discussion. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Del Judas. Mr. Shelton.
Good evening, Mr. President, and members of the city council. A little over a year ago, the mayor formed a small committee to study pension reforms and to make recommendations to him as to how the pensions in the city could best be modified in the future to, in a way that would be equitable to both the taxpayers and to the employees and retirees. That committee initially was made up by personnel director, myself, the chairperson of the city's retirement board, my deputy director, and the finance director. Later on, the committee grew a little larger, and we added the city solicitor and the chief of staff. Bearing in mind, it was the mayor's intent that this reform should be fair to all, the committee put together a plan that would greatly reduce the city's pensions cost over the years while still maintaining the city's future retirees, the ability to retire on a livable income, and designed it to withstand potential legal challenges. In general, there are several areas that affect the cost of pensions. Briefly, there would be the formula used to calculate the pension, the number of years of salary the pension is based upon, the age at which an employee is allowed to retire, the number of years an employee must work to be eligible for a pension, the cost of living adjustment for retirees, and the amount of employee contributions into the pension plans. Currently, the public safety employees, that is to say, police and fire, uniform, pay one-third of the actuarial cost of the pension, which is deducted from their pay weekly. This amount can range from between about 9% to as high as about 12% of their pay, and is recalculated every two years based upon the reports from the actuary. Municipal employees currently pay a fixed 8% of their weekly pay into the pension plans. This amount was increased from 6% to 7% in 2000, and from 7% to 8% in 2009. The elements that comprise the bulk of the cost of the pensions have been modified so as to reduce the overall cost to the taxpayers as follows. I'll go through the changes, what, police and fire are the same, and municipal is different, but I'll go, what they are now and what the proposal is. Currently, for police and fire, the normal retirement age is any age with 20 years of service. The proposal would change that to age 50 and 25 years of service. For municipal employees, the normal retirement age currently is 65, and that's unchanged in the new proposal. For an unreduced early retirement, which is not applicable to either police or fire, but under the municipal plan currently, municipal employees can retire at what is known as the point of 80, which is the combination of years of service and age equaling 80, or 30 years of service. Under the new proposal, municipal employees would have to be age 59 with a Under the new proposal, municipal employees would have to be aged 59 with at least 25 years of service for an unreduced early retirement. COLA, cost of living adjustment for retirees. Currently, police and fire have a 3% fixed COLA. The proposal would make that 75% of the consumer price index capped at 3%. For the municipal COLA, it is based on a very complex formula. It's in ordinance 60-399, if you'd like to look at it. It's a complex formula. We have to have the actuaries do that for us on an annual basis and we propose to keep that the same. As an aside, that system that we're currently using has not yielded a COLA in the past two years and it may not for years to come because it's based on a—it's based on market Final average salary currently for police and fire is the salary received in the last year of service. We propose to change that to the average of the salaries received in the last three years of service. For municipal employees, currently, it's the average of the three highest consecutive year's salary. We propose to change that to the average of the last three years of credible service. The benefit multiplier currently for police and fire, it's 2.5% for years 1 through 20, 2% for years 21 to 25, and 3% for years 26 to 30. We intend to simplify that for police and fire, a straight 2% every year. Municipal currently is 2.5% per year of service. The new proposal changes that to 2.0%. These proposed changes are significant and while the savings begin modestly, these changes will almost immediately bend the cost curve down. If these changes had been implemented 20 years ago, the city could now be realizing millions of dollars in annual savings, which would continue to increase in the following years. While we certainly don't expect the investment returns of 30 to 40% that we saw in the mid-'90s to occur in the immediate future, we believe that the investment market will gradually improve over the next several years. That fact alone will greatly reduce the city's pension liability. But when coupled with these reforms, the decrease in costs should be considerable and substantial, saving the taxpayers money while at the same time protecting the assets needed to pay the current employees a pension for when they eventually retire. We regret that it's taken so long to get these proposals before the city council, but we wanted to make sure that we got things right. In fact, tonight, you will see that there is an amendment proposed for both the police and fire pensions. And the reason for this was due to the fact that after careful consultation with our actuaries and based upon their recommendations, we changed the language concerning how the two different pension tiers would be evaluated by them. This is sort of a technical issue that can best be explained by the actuaries themselves if you are looking for a further explanation. But needless to say, we took their recommendation very seriously and decided to offer the amendment as suggested by the actuaries. Also, today, we have another amendment with the police two, tier two. And Councilman Colin Twanell, I believe, will introduce it formally to the floor. It's—for the chart that shows the annual pension. It now says a tier-two member shall be entitled to an annual pension. The amendment would say a tier-two member, upon having attained the age of 50, shall be entitled to an annual pension. And there's a chart that explains how. Also, you'll notice that all three of the letters that you received—that we've provided you from the actuaries detailing the plan changes—have attached to them a chart showing the anticipated future savings as projected by the actuaries. We believe that these estimates may be on the conservative side, but we will accept them as they are and we would ask the city council to consider them to be acceptable as the required fiscal note for legislation. I will now ask the actuaries to make comments and to answer your questions on the reports they have submitted to you. Thank you.
With regard to the municipal plan, I'd point out that in the long run, once all the current employees are retired or terminated and replaced by future employees hired after July 1/12, the costs for those employees, the fundamental cost of the benefits being earned, assuming all assumptions are realized, will be 2.8% lower. 2%—2.8% of pay lower. That's about a 21 or 22% reduction in the benefits for future municipal employees compared to current ones. The projections show that—on the attachment, show that by the end of the projection period which we've got here, which runs out through 2049, the city would be saving $2.6 million at that point. The savings start small, that's absolutely true, because the—there aren't any new employees in the plan today, so the actuarial valuation doesn't reflect any savings for the current people. And it builds slowly as more and more people terminate, retire and are replaced with new employees. But that's, I think, what you would expect. On the police two plan, the savings produce a larger reduction in the cost of the new employees' benefit, about a third. And I'll remind the council that—of that third, which is about a little under 12%, that one-third of that savings will go to the membership and the other two-thirds, or almost 8% of payroll, goes to the city. What we've proposed is setting up differences in the contribution rates that reflect this fundamental difference in the benefits for the tier-one and tier-two members. So, the tier-two members who are coming in with benefits that aren't as generous will also have a smaller contribution because of that. The difference in the police two is just over 3 and 3/4% that they—that they would pay less than the tier-one members. For fire two, same sort of story. The reduction in the cost for new members is about 7% and about 2/3 of that savings, 7% of payroll. And so, the savings to the city is about 2/3 of that or 4.6% roughly. And—or 4.3%. And over the next 30 years or so, you'll end up seeing savings in the close to $2 million range for fire two. Savings for police two were even larger. I didn't give you that figure, but they're over $3 million by the end of the projection period. Do you have any questions?
Councilman Solomon. Thank you. Before we proceed further with this, I just have a question through the chair to legal Are we within our authority to be able to do this or should we be seeking a declaratory judgment from a court of law based on the allegations we've received in correspondence from certain governing bodies, bargaining bodies? I know today, I'm in receipt of a letter from Rhode Island Council 94 that says that the city council is acting outside its scope of authority. And it refers to law, some of the law which we have cited in the past. And I just want to make sure we're standing on firm ground as we proceed with this issue before the council.
Mr. Enrington.
No, I have a copy. I've seen a copy of the letter. The letter referenced an opinion that I gave to this council in August of last year when there was an ordinance being proposed to change healthcare coshare for—although the change would take place out in the future, it would impact current employees. But at a future time. In reviewing the proposed changes here, there's some distinctions between this change and the one that was proposed for the healthcare coshare. One of those changes is that this impact falls on employees not yet hired, not yet members of bargaining units. The second difference is that these pension ordinances come within the jurisdiction of the council based on enabling acts that were passed by the general assembly roughly around 40 years ago, maybe more. But those enabling acts give the council the authority by ordinance to act upon these Those are distinctions that I see between what the council is acting upon now and what was proposed to be acted upon last August. You asked about it, declaratory judgment. I suppose the council could pursue that if they want to, but those are distinctions that I see. If you're looking for a legal opinion from me, I think those are distinctions that represent differences from what was being proposed before. And while in 30 years, I don't give guarantees about results, as you probably don't either, I think those are two significant differences.
I appreciate that answer. But as you also indicated, our pensions were governed by ordinances that were established through enabling legislation. And ordinances are laws that we expect will be followed. So, this one—this question is from the—through the chair, council president to Oscar. We've had ordinances on the books, your person—you know, head of personnel, we've had ordinances on the books for years stating the amount of benefits that should be given. And it seems that those ordinances have been violated willfully, though an ordinance, let's say, would have said 70% cap, 75 or 80% was given. And that traveled through personnel, that traveled through finance, that traveled through treasurers. Until it was pointed out that that was illegal and we were going to challenge it in court, no one was willing to abide by that ordinance. So, I guess what I'm basically trying to say here is that ordinances are only good if they're going to be followed. If they're not going to be followed to the letter of the law, then the ordinance—